...to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of October 15th, 2014. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, is available at the front of the chambers with the clerk. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. Out of courtesy for those attending the meeting, the commissioners and staff, cellphone usage is not permitted in these chambers during any portion of this meeting. We appreciate your cooperation. If you parked in the parking garage across the street to the north, the gate will be open and you don't need a coupon. Please note, the Planning Commission action today is final on item number 1.1, special permit number 2022E. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action to the Planning Commission to the City Council by filing a notice of appeal with the city clerk within 14 days following the action of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission action on all other items is a recommendation to the City Council or County Board. The first item of business is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held October 1st, 2014, as amended. Is there a motion?
Move approval as amended.
Call the vote.
Beacham?
Yes.
Weber?
Epstein.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Cor?
Epstein.
Shear?
Epstein.
Poe?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Motion carries. Did we get five? Five to zero. Thank you.
The one item on the consent agenda, special permit 2022E, has been removed and will be called for a separate public hearing due to the request by the applicant to revive the conditions of approval. And there are no requests for deferral. Therefore, we will now proceed to the public hearings. The staff will make a brief presentation. The applicant then will be then requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. Each person testifying should state their name and their address and they have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The timer will go off after four minutes, then you will have one minute to wrap up your testimony. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Jean, please call the first public hearing item.
Okay, thank you. And that would be item 1.1 from the consent agenda, special permit number 2022E to revise the lot layout, to amend the use restrictions in note 23, to allow the potential for Lot 2 of Pine Lake Heights South 17th addition to be used for additional parking area, and to adjust commercial square footages. The property is generally located at the northeast corner of South 27th Street and Jamie Lane. The Planning Commission action is final unless appealed to the City Council. Are there any, the staff recommendation is conditional approval and I would ask if there are any ex parte communications to be disclosed by the commission.
I see none.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Kristi Ikorn, Planning Staff. The application that's before you is to amend an existing special permit for planned service commercial in order to allow for parking on what is shown on this exhibit as Lot 4, Block 2. A few years ago, we did an expansion of this special permit and this area along here was zoned O3. And with that expansion, the O3 was rezoned from O3 to H4. The applicant at that time had done, had some extensive meetings with the neighbors and had worked out a set of uses that the neighbors in general did not want to see on the lots that were adjacent to Granger Parkway. They came to an agreement and that agreement was put on the site plan and in the resolution for this particular special permit. One of those uses happened to be auto vehicle sales. Today, Lot 5 is looking at doing an expansion. It is currently the DuToe lot and they're expanding to this lot and they'd like to expand to this lot and use it for parking. After discussing this change with the applicant, they had agreed to keep all the screening that currently exists along Granger Parkway. They also agreed to screen this parking area as if it were a parking lot, whether they use it for employee parking, customer parking, or perhaps storage of vehicles if necessary for the dealership. So they will screen it as if it was a parking lot and meet those standards. The applicant also had a neighborhood meeting prior to submitting their application to the planning department and I, it's my understanding they had one person showed up and that person was not in opposition to the change. The reason why the application has been pulled from the consent agenda is because the applicant had some questions and some changes that they wanted to make to the conditions of approval. We have discussed them with staff and staff has been okay with the changes that they would like to make, but I'm going to let the applicant talk about why they wanted to make those changes. Are there any questions at this time for me?
Kristi, can you just describe exactly where the screening is that you're talking about, the additional screening that's going to happen?
Okay, so today there is a set of pine trees that come all along Granger Parkway and they do a very good job of screening. Generally today, for auto dealerships, you are not required to screen if you have a display area, but if you have a parking lot, you're required to provide six-foot screening around all areas that aren't adjacent to another parking lot. So for instance, they would probably need to screen along the south border here and any other areas that are not adjacent to a parking lot. They will also need to provide parking lot trees as part of this development where they would not need to do that if it was just a display area for.
So we're not talking about additional screening along Granger Parkway though?
Along Granger Parkway, if the existing screening meets the current parking lot standards, and I do believe it does.
And there's no business on, is it Lot E there? The next one to your right?
This one.
There's nothing there right now, is there?
This is where the Asian Fusion Restaurant is. This lot to the north is currently vacant.
Okay.
There will be a public access drive that comes between this Lot 3 and Lot 4 and it's very difficult to see unless you look very closely. That access is not there today. And the applicant will explain that one of the amendments to the conditions is a clarification so that it's clear to everybody that when this access, which is already approved, were to be constructed, that there's likely going to have to be one or two trees removed from that screen.
Thanks.
Any further questions for Kristi? All right. Applicant?
Good afternoon, members of the Planning Commission. Danae Calcowski, I'm appearing today on behalf of DuToe Investments. They have the Subaru dealership there within this development and own, current owner of Lot 5, which is shown on the site plan, and a contract to purchase Lot 4. I think Kristi's done a good job of giving you an overview. In essence, we're going to be moving 5,000 square feet of floor area from Lot 4 over to Lot 5 so they can expand onto their current existing building. And then we want to make a limited exception to those use restrictions to allow Lot 4 to potentially be used as some parking to accommodate some, the expanded business with the Subaru dealership. We feel this is a very limited exception, only applies to Lot 4 with really a low intensity use. DuToe is keeping their front door for the business down on Jamie Lane, keeping the existing pine trees in place along Jamie Lane that are there today and they're in agreement with the staff condition to do the parking lot screening. And so really, I think this amendment will allow the potential for a local business to grow in a location that's been very successful for them in a manner that doesn't really have an impact on the neighbors. As Kristi mentioned, we met with those, the neighbors before we even submitted. We had three people attend. Two of them were just, were directors of the association and we had one person attend who is an actual neighbor. Just good discussion, no real concerns from them. I think they wanted to see those trees that are along Granger and nice and mature, stay there. Other than that, there really weren't any concerns about this limited change to the potential uses on that lot. So with this amendment, we'd be able to do parking on that lot or it could still be utilized, if DuToe didn't need it for the parking, it could still be utilized for the uses that it's approved for today, just 5,000 square feet less since we've shifted some of that square feet. I'm going to put my map back up because I have a couple amendments that I want to go As Kristi mentioned on note 1.1, it calls for the existing screening to stay in place and we just want to make it clear so there's no misunderstanding. They will lose a tree or two or three when that access point to Granger, which is currently approved, and I've got it highlighted here, kind of in purple, is actually built. There's already a 24-foot public access easement through that location, half on our lot, half on the lot adjacent to it. We were very clear about that with the neighbors and so we just wanted to add that language to the condition just to make sure there was no misunderstanding there. The second note that we're asking to revise is 1.2. Kristi had asked that note 11 be amended to, right now it currently reads that there's common access between all of the drives out here and the parking. She wanted it, had requested that it be changed to cross parking. Right now, there's really, the words cross parking are really only used in connection with these two lots because they need to be looked at together in order to meet the parking requirements. And because we are really just amending a limited portion of this use permit, I don't want to implement a change that would impact, excuse me, potentially everybody on the site and so we're just asking to amend note 33, which is already a note on the plan, that talks about cross parking between these two lots and we're just wanting to say there could also be cross parking between Lots 4 and 5 so that if in the event they do end up using it for parking for DuToe, they'd be able to look at the requirements for those two lots together. And then our last suggested change is 1.4. We're just asking that that condition be removed. Again, I think it was, it's an attempt to sort of clean up the site plan and remove the columns that deal with parking on the land use table and allow it to just be, say you have to meet the restrictions. Again, at this stage, this use permit's been in existence for a long time. We've sort of used that land use and the parking table in order to, it sort of serves as a police mechanism for all the lots out there. Your lot's shown, the required parking for your lot's shown and you have to meet your own required parking. It sort of keeps one lot from going in for an expansion, not being able to meet their own parking requirements on their lot, but somebody else has extra parking and sort of taking over that extra parking, which then puts the adjacent lot at a disadvantage. So leaving that table there, just, I don't think it hurts anything and I think it helps us keep the individual requirements for the individual lots set out so that there's really no confusion on that since we have multiple property owners out here. With that, I guess we are, we think this is an amendment that again allows for some potential growth in an area that's been successful and I think we can do that without providing, you know, additional ramifications to the neighbors. So we're asking for your approval for the amendment today and with the amendments that we've requested and I'd be happy to answer any questions. And Mike Minnick from DuToe is also here today if you have any specific questions.
When you guys had that meeting with the neighbors, was planning staff present?
No, we had invited Kristi and the city council member. Because we hadn't made a formal application, I think Kristi felt it was better for us just to have our own exploratory meeting and get the reaction of the neighbors, but they were invited.
As far as the parking, how many stalls are you going to have on Lot 4?
I don't know that that's really been determined or laid out yet, particularly if they put the screening in or required to do some of the screening. I don't have a number on that, Tracy.
Danae, when you talk about parking, are you talking about display parking of the vehicles that are being sold or parking for employees?
I think it could be either or a combination. I think this leaves, it leaves it open to either one and it's probably whatever will end up working best on that site with, you know, where their building location is. But I think it's going to be, since we're going to meet the parking lot design standards and screening standards, most people aren't going to be able to probably tell the difference.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any testimony in support of this application? Do we have any testimony in opposition to this application? Further questions for Kristi? I do have another one. I know originally that you, the agreement with the neighbors was that they restricted the use of auto sales facilities, so is this just going to open it up for Lot 4 or are we getting rid of all of those restrictions or just?
It's specifically for Lot 4 and all of the other restrictions stay.
Stay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you. Any need for rebuttal? Okay. We'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
Move approval. Second.
This looks like a good expansion for the area for an already successfully run business, so I'm going to support the application. Call the vote, please.
Beacham?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Jean, did we note for the record?
Yes. I was going to do that. I apologize, I forgot. Motion for conditional approval and I believe is the motion with the requested amendments?
Yes.
Yes.
So motion for conditional approval with the amendments carries seven to zero and I did forget to note that Commissioner Sunderman has declared a conflict of interest on this item.
And before we move on to the next item, we'll see if we can get him back in here.
Public hearing item number 4.1 on page 15, comprehensive plan conformance number 14021 to review the proposed Lancaster County Road and Bridge Construction Program for fiscal year 2015 and 2016 through 2020. This is a review as to conformance with the comprehensive plan. The staff recommendation is a finding of conformance. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed by the commission?
I'm Mike Branzo with the Lincoln Lancaster Planning Department and our staff did the review on the county 1 and 6. This is a program, the road and bridge program is to be reviewed for conformity with the 2040 Long Range Transportation Plan, the comprehensive plan. The findings of the staff was that the program is emphasizing the functioning archerials as recommended in the LRTP and that the plan, the program has been coordinated with engineering services for the coordination of projects within the developing area and for RUTS projects that the, that we've requested that they develop along certain roadways such as 98th Street. Our finding is that the, it was working within the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. You may notice that you had a few comments and emails concerning two segments of roadway that were not in the program. This was 112th Street, south of O, as well as 120th Street. It's been coordinated with staff and county engineer Pam Dingman. These two projects, I may note, are in the transportation plan as potential paving, but not within the fiscally constrained element of the transportation plan. So they are not included in the program, but the program does fit within the Long Range Transportation Plan as we noted. All comments received by the public as well as the Planning Commission will be forwarded to the Lancaster County Board for their public hearing, which is scheduled for Tuesday, October 28th at 7:00 PM. I'm here to answer any questions you may have, as well as Pam Dingman, county engineer is here to answer questions as well.
Mike, since we did get so many inquiries from the public this time, could you just real briefly outline what it is that this board is being asked to do in comparison to, you know, who makes the determination of what gets paved when?
The staff review is with the Long Range Transportation Plan or the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. The plan was updated in 2011 and it is extended out to 2040 for potential development of roadways within the urban areas as well as within the county. We've looked at both. Through that process, we've identified the number of roads that could or potentially be developed within the life of the plan and therefore that's the fiscally constrained element. And that is what the county engineer uses as a basis for developing roads or new paving throughout the county. Another element that the county engineer uses that she could address would be a roadway sufficiency study or a roadway survey of conditions of roadways. So those roadways, that survey helps set the priorities within the program itself.
So, but our role here today though is just to find out if the projects that are listed as part of this plan conform with the Long Range Transportation Plan and the comprehensive plan that has already been set out.
Correct. It's, the annual program is to be identified or reviewed with a conformity element of the plan.
Okay. Any other questions for Mike?
Mike, because we got so many emails on this, can you just address, when you guys are looking at gravel roads and you're looking at safety, what kinds of, what kinds of things do you take into consideration when you're talking about when to pave a gravel road? And I don't know if, I see Pam saying.
Yeah, I bet that's better for Pam.
Yeah, yeah, please come on. The county engineer does a road survey. Take in mind that, keep in mind that the county engineer is responsible for over 1,300 miles of roads throughout the county. A thousand, about a thousand, a little bit more are gravel and that the, each year they get to drive every mile of that and do a review of their condition and which ones would fit into their maintenance program or rise to the level of paving. Maybe I can go to Pam, answer a little more detail.
For the record, Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So we do look at the roads through a number of different criteria. So average daily traffic counts, so we take traffic counts every year. We do keep traffic counts on every, every mile of every county road. In addition to that though, we also do review the conditions and we put the criteria of the American Asphalt Association on every road. So since I took office, we reviewed all 272 linear miles of pavement as well as did traffic counts on a number of the 1,052 linear miles of gravel road. Now, we might also note, Mike, that we have some roads that are just dirt. They are minimum maintenance roads, they have not been graded or gravelled. And if you have the opportunity to drive a few of those, they can be a little bit interesting. So we look at all of those things combined and then we throw in a few more other criteria. So as time goes on, we do grade roads and some roads, as we're closer to the urban fringe are graded, well, I should say all roads because we haven't entered a local agreement, are graded with the RUTS. So rural to urban transition section so that as we grow, we don't end up with issues that are difficult with right of way because growth has happened around these roads. But sometimes down in areas we, that are more urban, we grade what is a two-lane section of road. So this year, when we looked at the plan, we looked at a combination of, for pavement in particular, a combination of what roads have already been graded. And in the past, the county engineer's office has said that once they grade a road, that they will pave it in the next two to five years. And that hasn't always happened because we have about 26 linear miles of roadway that has been graded and not paved. As Mike mentioned, you know, we don't have the money for 26 linear miles. In fact, we typically pave about one to one and a half miles of new road every year.
And Pam, just as a follow-up, when you guys are looking at traffic counts, we had a few comments about big trucks coming through. Do the big trucks count more or is kind of one set of wheels the same as another?
You know, I'd have to check with our group for sure. I know that we don't have the most sophisticated traffic count system, but it does have the ability to keep track of axles and so I'll have to check with my group and see the actual technical parameters of what the count is. You know, many of our rural areas do have, especially this time of year, a lot of truck traffic on them because, you know, we're moving grain. We're moving grain, we're moving corn and, you know, we're moving soybeans and so that becomes the primary use of a lot of our rural roads.
Pam, and how is the one to two miles that are paved per year selected? How is that given priority?
Well, you know, as I stated earlier, so what we do first is we look at traffic count and the traffic count on those roads and how they're being used. And then this year, we also looked at what roads had already been graded, so what roads were prepped, so to speak, for pavement.
Chris?
Pam, can you speak specifically to the 112th between A and Van Doren? Was that evaluated at all? Where was that in the selection process?
Sure. You know, we do have recent traffic counts of 112th and of 120th in this area. In fact, our traffic counts are either 2013 or 2014 depending on what mile you're looking at. In this particular area where our focus is going to be, and quite frankly has been for the last decade, is paving 98th Street from A to O. And if you drive by that, of course, it's a section line that road that has never been opened up and so it's adjacent to Hillcrest. So what we've done is although it took the better part of a decade to acquire the right of way, is we recently finished up acquiring the right of way so that in the next, well, at some point prior to 2030, we can grade that road and then this particular right of way agreement asks that we pave it the next year. So the next road that needs to be paved as we moved east is 98th Street from A to O. If you're familiar with the area, to the north is Waterford. That road is under construction right now, actually not in my jurisdiction, in the city of Lincoln's jurisdiction. As you go to the south, we have, we have graded and prepped those roads for pavement already. And of course, as you continue south, you have pavement actually at 98th and Old Cheney all the way down to Highway 2. So as we move east, what we will look to do is to finish up that 98th Street corridor and then we will begin moving east again.
Okay. So then 120th and 112th really will not get the attention because 98th will?
Correct. Now also, you know, I will note that the traffic counts that we have for those roads are well under 300. Really what we would look at is once we reach a traffic count of about 300, then we're going to look at grading the road for a paved section and once we reach a traffic count of 400, we would look at paving it. So with the particular roads that we got calls on, the traffic count is well under 300. And that's just what we've used typically to prioritize. Last year, when I attended the 1 and 6 meeting, every person that stepped to the microphone asked for paving and I would, as county engineer, love to pave everyone's road, but the reality is, is that our finances are very limited. And if you look at the 1 and 6 plan, you'll note that, for example, we did not build any bridges last year and we're not going to build any bridges this year.
Thank you.
Do you anticipate that the paving of 98th Street will take will take some of the traffic pressure off of 120th and 112th?
I do anticipate that. I think we all anticipate that. The reality is that will make a really nice connection. That is in the 2040 comprehensive plan for us and it is the logical next step.
Yeah, my question is mainly upgrading existing paved roads. And in particular, I'm most familiar with South 68th Street. And I was kind of going through here doing traffic counts. And I noticed that that's probably about the second highest traffic count other than Northwest 48th. And there is no projected upgrading of that road other than it looks like right-of-way acquisition in the next five years. And, you know, particularly there's Norris School down there, a lot of inexperienced young drivers, basically no shoulders. I did notice in some language here, there was programmed two-layed widening. Would that be like what happened between Roca Road and Saltillo where you have turn lanes and wider shoulders? And is that traffic count, if you actually hit 6,000, they actually say that you're looking at four-lane roads?
The transportation plan shows that in the future, as being upgraded, we say two-lane, but it will remain two-lane, but they would have shoulders on it like the segment you pointed out that was just south of Saltillo.
How far down? Do you project that and when do you project that? I didn't really see anything in the five years.
We do not have, the county program and the LRTP is not prioritized like that. So, it's subject to actually activity in the corridor itself. But our plan shows that extending this far south is Princeton Road sometime in the future.
Okay. I'm just looking at the 5,000 traffic count now. I mean, if 6,000 is the breakpoint for looking at four-lane, we're on a roll and they're all two-lane with not much shoulder there with a pretty high traffic count, you know, and there's nothing really looking, and there may be other roads like that. I'm just wondering how you prioritize those types of situations where they're really getting up there in counts.
I know the Denton Road was improved with shoulders. That road used federal funds, so it's nice to have that assistance when it's available. I don't know that that's available for South 68th Street.
Yeah, I realize funds are difficult, but just.
You know, and it is unfortunate, if you go back and you look at the amount of federal funds that we have been allocated, recently the equation has changed. And so, whereas Denton Road received a large amount of federal funding, now we're receiving more like $250,000 a year for federal funding. $250,000 a year, it's 455 roughly, you know, it's kind of a little rule of thumb there, to put two lanes of asphalt down. So, we are becoming more and more limited with the funding we have. And of course, my department took additional cuts in order to balance the county budget this year. I mean, you may notice also, the same with the federal funds we receive for bridges, where as we used to receive federal funds that helped us build one or two bridges a year, really for the last 20 years, last year we received $80,000. This year we'll receive another $80,000. You may notice the bridges that are in your 1-6 plan, there's three on the standby and they range $800,000 to $1.8 million. So, obviously, we're going to have to save our $80,000 for quite a while before we can afford to build a bridge.
Pam, just as a follow-up to that, do we have any bridges that we're looking at having to close in the next few years if we can't find funding to improve them?
You know, it's unfortunate, but it's really not a question of if I will close bridges. It's a question of when, as the county engineer, whenever we inspect a bridge and we determine it to be unsafe, we will close it. Since I have it in office, we have had to close several of them. Fortunately, all of them that we have closed are currently open because we were able to find ways to repair them. In one case, we had to find steel that was manufactured over 100 years ago to repair a bridge that was older than 100 years. So, when we look at that, it is significant. As we go forward, I am watching and have testified at the legislature on LB 528, which is a special bill that would allow us to bond bridges. Lancaster County has 297 bridges, and I might add that that makes the engineering definition of a bridge is a bridge or culvert that is wider than 20 feet. 297. So, in order to stay up with our replacement plan, we need to be replacing those at the rate of about six a year. Well, for about the last 20 years, we've replaced them at the rate of two or three a year. Of course, with last year being zero and this year being zero. We current, a bridge's life is 50 years. We currently have over 80 structures that are older than 50 years and about 50 structures that are older than 1950.
And this may not be something to which you can speak, but do we know if the closure of the bridges that we've had to do, I'm sure that they're impacting people in terms of convenience, but are we impacting people in terms of emergency calls, services, that kind of thing? Has anybody looked at that?
I am not aware where we have impacted an emergency service, although I'm sure it's a matter of time if we close a bridge that we would. In particular, the bridge that was closed for several months on 176th Street just south of Waverly Road, its traffic count was only 76 a day. So, it's not a high traffic count, but it's still a bridge that's important to the people that live in that corridor. That particular bridge, we purchased from, I think, Department of Roads, but we can't verify for sure, in 1932 because it no longer met their criteria. And we installed it in Emerald and then we moved it in 1968 to the area east of Waverly. So, that's just a little bit about some of the bridges. You know, the Raymond Road Bridge that is on the standby on your list is actually a bridge that has been in our plan, in our 1-6 plan sadly, since 1998. That particular bridge, in a minor rainfall event, over tops the road for about a stretch, a stretch of about 200 feet long, 12 to 18 inches deep. So, in some of these major storms that we've had this year, I've just gotten to where when the weather is forecast to be somewhat hazardous, that we go ahead and we put the barricades out in advance so that when the sheriff's office calls and tells me the water's over the road, they just pull the barricade up and we close the road. But as time goes on, when the roads do become dangerous or the bridges do become dangerous and we do not have the funding or the money to replace them or make them safe for the traveling public, we will close them.
And then I have one additional question regarding safety. There's been unfortunately a lot of press about Saltillo Road this, in the last few months. Can you talk to us a little bit about when we put shoulders on roads, what kind of cost that adds, and just generally how we try and track the safety and our, kind of our vision for Saltillo Road in general? I know South Beltway is hoped to have some impact on that.
She's hitting me with hard questions.
I'm sorry.
I don't have the data with me for the comparison of a road with or without a shoulder. I would say that since you're probably adding, you know, roughly a third more pavement, that you could expect the cost to be roughly a third more. Because what happens is now you have the extra paved shoulder and you have additional dirt that you have to put in place, but I mean, Kathy, I could get those numbers for you. As far as Saltillo, at this moment in time, you know, we did just pave an additional 1.6 miles of it. I do sit on the team that is, you know, not designing, but coordinating. And that's, again, you know, some of the things that we do with the MPO, Department of Roads and the city of Lincoln. What they will be, what they're talking about along the Saltillo corridor is at 77, they will put a traffic circle or roundabout on either side of 77 to hopefully slow down traffic. Of course, that's way over at 77. The accidents that have been happening have been happening further east. I think that really, at this point, to add shoulders to this road would be incredibly expensive. And we don't really have another option at this time.
Is it hoped that the South Beltway will take some of the traffic off of Saltillo?
Well, the engineers in my office, and you know, engineering humor can be a little, a little dry. Many of my peers can tell you that. The engineers in my office currently joke that Saltillo is the South Beltway. So, we do see that when the South Beltway is constructed, it will take a lot of traffic off of that. Again, if you look at the traffic numbers in this particular corridor, I think the first mile east of 77 is a little under 8,000 cars a day. And then, of course, as you go out, by the time you get within a couple miles of the county boundary, you're all the way down to 132 cars. So, I think that's really evident for how people are using Saltillo.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Pam or Mike? All right, thanks. Do we have testimony in support of this application? Testimony in opposition? Any further questions for staff? All right, we will entertain a motion.
Move a finding of conformance, the comprehensive plan.
Second?
Discussion. All right, well, I think for what we are being asked to do, which is to find the plan in conformance with the comprehensive plan, I believe it is. I really do think it's unfortunate every time we have these discussions to hear about really the sorry state of a lot of the infrastructure in both the city and county. I wish we could wave a magic wand and come up with funding to do something about that, especially when it is starting to affect public safety and several people are concerned about it. But as for what we're being asked to do, which is, does this plan conform with the fiscally constrained long-range transportation plan? I believe we have to find that it does. Any other comments? Okay, call the vote.
Yes.
Trevor?
Yes.
Underwood?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yep.
Cora?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. And this is a recommendation to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners. And that hearing is scheduled for Tuesday, October 28th at 7:00 PM in these chambers. Okay, today on our agenda, we have a rehearing on text amendment. Item number 5.1 on page 27, text amendment number 14007, amending Title 27 of the Lincoln Municipal Code to correct errors made in previous text amendments and to clarify existing language without changing the intent of the language and to modify appeal procedures to consistently include any council member or the mayor among the listed persons who have the right to appeal the applicable order, approval, disapproval, or other decision. I will not read all of the specific amendments that are listed on your agenda. The staff recommendation is approval and I'd ask if there are any ex parte communications to be disclosed.
Planning staff, you heard that right, this is a rehearing. I'm back. Actually, I wasn't even here the first time because the first time that this application came through was on the consent agenda. And the reason it was on the consent agenda is because it was a package of corrections and clarifications and it was not intended to change the meaning or enforcement of any of the regulations that were in Title 27, but to make it clear for both staff and for the public of what those regulations did mean. So, after it was approved at Planning Commission, it went on to city council. But before it had a hearing at city council, it came to our attention that one of our corrections and clarifications needed to be expanded to include the mayor's name on those entities that have the ability to appeal a decision. Throughout Chapter 27, there's several areas that give different entities the ability to appeal different kinds of decisions. It's not all in one place. And so, as the text has been amended since 1979, those specific areas had not been consistently updated. And so, we wanted to come back through and add the mayor's name to all the places where we were adding the city council's name and the ability to appeal a decision. As we were going through that process, we had a staff meeting and we were discussing an issue that came up with Chapter 27 with regards to signs. And in the middle of that meeting, we said, well, it's just a correction or clarification. We should really someday do a text amendment to clarify this for everybody on what we're talking about. And so, since this was going through the process, we thought it would be a good time to do that. And that correction or clarification is underlined in the staff report under 2769030 and it talks about clarifying that the maximum sign area for one sign is 500 square feet and that the total allowable sign area per architectural elevation for a building is 30% of that architectural elevation. Those rules have been in place for a very long time. We have not changed them significantly since 1979, except for when we did a little consolidation of our sign language back in 2009. They have been enforced pretty much the same way across the board. And so, this amendment just clarifies how that regulation has been enforced and will continue to be enforced. And then the second item that was underlined in the staff report was all of the areas that we needed to go back for clarification to add both the mayor and the city council to appeals language. Does anyone have any questions for me?
I have, oh.
Maya, and then Dennis.
One little detail is on page 35, there's one mayor that is not capitalized where all the other ones are, under appeal. And then, a question about the major entertainment and event use group. Adding, we were looking to add a number there, generally over 500 people. I was curious where that number came from and how that has been interpreted previously.
The reason we added that number was because a few months ago, there had been some questions at Building and Safety with regards to use groups. And we have a category or a use group that talks about major entertainment and event use group and what's the difference between that and commercial recreation type of use group. And the 500 number was added to give some perspective to how big is a large crowd? Are we talking about Pinnacle Bank Arena? Or are we talking something that could be smaller like Pershing or an auditorium within a building? So, the 500 number is not specific. It was added just to give some general guidance. And in fact, I think we added it so it says generally around 500 people. So, if you had an activity that consisted of 600 people, it might still fall in that use group if you read all of the characteristics of that use group. But 600 people potentially could fall in something more major like a Pinnacle Bank Arena, just depending on the characteristics of the use and how it fits with the different use groups.
Is that number just a, is that generally how it has been interpreted previously or?
We haven't really had to interpret it previously because when we did use groups back in 2009, this was a new category that sort of distinguished large event activities such as Pinnacle Bank Arena, motor vehicle racing, large outdoor activities versus the smaller activities. And so, it really, that's the reason we needed to provide clarification here is because we didn't have that generalized term that needed to be interpreted before 2009. And we haven't had any new uses come in where that has needed to be applied for. I'll give you an example. If you remember, we were working on the Speedway Sporting Village application. And as part of that application, they had talked about having uses that in their sort of, it's not a convention center, but in their activity areas, they talked about perhaps having weddings and perhaps having dog agility shows. And so, the question came up, if they do dog agility shows where people come sort of for public assembly, does that then kick them into a different kind of use group? Are they a Pinnacle Bank Arena? Are they a very large entertainment and activity use group? And that thought was no, they don't really fit that category. So, we thought, well, how many people show up for activities like that? 500 to 1,000? And after discussion, we decided that 500 was a good number to give us guidance on what that trigger would be.
Thank you. Dennis?
Section 27...
Section 27.02.200, definition of story, page four of the actual document, page 33 of our packet. Line five talks about six feet above grade as defined. Line six strikes grade, and we go to the new definition of ground elevation, which by the way is great, that's really the right way to do it. Is line five to be changed as well, to ground elevation?
It is not.
Okay, tell me why.
Building and Safety had requested this change as we moved through, because they felt that the term, the way ground elevation was being utilized up above in line five was different than the way it was being utilized in line six.
Okay.
And how they were interpreting that in terms of building code, it made more sense to distinguish those two. And I can't pretend to tell you, Dennis, that I fully understand that distinction.
Okay. Me either.
Fully, but they said it did clarify for them, and that this was going to be more consistent with building code than the way it had previously been drafted.
Okay.
Any other questions for Kristi? All right. Do we have an applicant other than you?
We are the applicant.
All right. So, any testimony in support? Opposition? I assume we had no further staff questions, so we'll go ahead and entertain a motion. Move approval.
Second?
Second. All right, well, again, I'm always glad to see us cleaning up things that make things more easy and more useful to the people that have to go through the zoning code. So, I'm going to support the application. Call the vote.
Deacon?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Poe?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
For approval carries eight to zero, and this is a recommendation to the City Council.
At this time, anyone wishing to speak before the Planning Commission that did not want to speak on an agenda item may do so. And seeing no one, we are going to adjourn to room 113 for briefing on three watershed master plans.